All right, I'm at, I'm at home tonight. Uh, well, let's get, let's get started. Uh, do we have Chaplain Taylor on? For us?
Yes, sir.
Good. Chaplain Taylor, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Hey, good. It's, uh, it's, it's good to see you. And, uh, before you get started, there was a good article this week about shield a badge with prayer and with your, uh, your history of that. So congratulations and we appreciate uh, what you do for the commission, but also for, uh, all of our folks across our county and across the whole region, it looks like. So, um, that was a good article and, uh, we appreciate you very much. Hope you know that, right?
Yes, sir. Thank y'all for all y'all did.
Well, tha- thank you, pal. And, uh, again, it was a good article. So, um, this is just a regular, uh, county co- county commission meeting is regular. It's May eighteenth, twenty twenty. And so, uh, we start just like we start when we're together. And, uh, we're going to start with a couple of things. Uh, one's going to be a, a pledge. Uh, then we're going to have a prayer. It's, uh, called a solemnizing prayer by Chaplain Taylor, and it's for the commissioners. Certainly in these times, we need to make, uh, good, sound decisions and we are always seeking wisdom. So this kind of centers us and allows us to come into these meetings with a good frame of mind and we appreciate our chaplain being with us. So, uh, Chaplain Taylor, uh, if you'll get us started, Commissioner, if you, if you'll join me.
Lord, I come to you today and I thank you for our county commissioners. Lord, I pray you keep them healthy and well, Lord. Give them wisdom they need, Lord. And during these trying times, I pray you'd encourage their hearts. And I pray you bless them in a special way, dear Lord. I place me in your hands for this meeting tonight. Be with them now in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I'll have our pledge. I pledge allegiance
of the United States of America and to the one nation.
Thank you. All right. We've got, uh, got a few changes to the agenda. We're going to add an item H to the consent agenda. Uh, that was provided to you. This comes from TJ Brown. It's for the Emergency Management Performance Grant. Uh, so we'll add that as consent item H, if you all are okay with that. And, uh, does anyone else have any other additions or deletions? All right, hearing none, then do we have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
All right, we have a Craig motion, uh, Judy a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. Uh, then we have the minutes from May fourth were provided for us. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes as provided?
So moved.
All right, Judy and Jim second, all in favor, say aye. Thank you. And we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
In a second?
Aye.
All right, one second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thanks very much. Uh, Randy, I'll check back with you again. Randy in April, anyone for public comment?
Let's open this up. And, uh, if there's anyone for public comment, if you can raise your hand or if you're dialing in, if you can do star nine. You can honestly, we have one dial in, if you can do star nine, if you're willing, uh, or wanting to speak during public comment. If not, no action is required. And Chairman, not seeing any action from anyone.
All right, very good. Then we'll move on, um, to item number three, and that's, uh, public hearing for Project Lake. So Scott Shelton, assuming you're online with us.
I am.
Oh, good. Uh, hello, good to see you.
Good to see you. Okay.
Floor's yours.
All right, uh, thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for agreeing to hear this request today from the EDC for Project Lake. Uh, we're excited about the project and we hope you are too. Second slide, please. Sorry, can everyone see my presentation?
All right, Scott, just one moment, please. I'm sorry.
Oh, no problem. But, um, I'll go ahead and just get started, uh, and April, can you go on to, go on to the second slide, please? Uh, this project, Project Lake, uh, the company behind it is a pharmaceutical manufacturer. Uh, and they're looking for a facility right now to initially produce hand sanitizer. I'm sure you can understand, given things going on today, that that's a pretty crucial need. Uh, at some point though, the company would transition to producing, um, various generic drugs that would be available over the counter and by prescription. Next slide, please. Right now, as far as Rowan County goes, they're considering the former EI Solutions building in Kannapolis for this project. And we've been told that competing locations for the project include, uh, facilities in South Carolina, Georgia, and Virginia. Next slide, please. And if our community was chosen, the company would create, uh, three hundred and eighty-eight jobs over the next four years. Uh, these are in a variety of categories, including filling team members, lab techs, sales staff, uh, facilities technicians. And the company has said it'll invest over fourteen million dollars in improvements to the facility and equipment upgrades. I believe the breakdown is about five million in real property and about nine million in equipment upgrades. And the majority of these improvements will be done by the end of twenty twenty-one. Next slide, please. Uh, as far as zoning and permitting, we don't anticipate any issues. We'd work with the city of Kannapolis for this. Uh, the facility, as you're aware, made pharmaceuticals before. That's what they're proposing now. So we don't see any issues moving forward as far as the uses in this building. Next slide, please. Which, as you're aware, um, companies that invest over five million dollars in Rowan County are eligible for a level one grant. This basically pays a grant equivalent, equivalent to seventy-five percent of the tax, uh, the increased tax revenue generated and back to the company as a form of grant. And, uh, right now, the company's requesting assistance under this program, uh, for the standard level one grant. Next slide, please. Of course, you've got numbers in your packet. Those were based on certain, uh, I guess, assumptions. Uh, basically that the tax rate would remain at the current level of sixty-five point seven five cents per hundred dollars. And that nine point six million of new equipment and construction would accrue, uh, or occur, sorry, prior to the end of twenty twenty-one. And that the final investment would be done by the end of twenty twenty-four. Next slide, please. And there are the numbers, as you see, um, next slide. Uh, as far as a revenue breakdown, during those five incentivized years, uh, the county would collect about three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in tax revenue. The total incentive grant paid out over five years would be a little over two hundred and seventy thousand. So during those five years, the county would net about ninety thousand dollars in revenue. Over ten years, the county would collect about eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue. Disperse the grant we just mentioned and retain about five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of revenue. Next slide, please. Uh, on May twenty-sixth, the city of Kannapolis will also hold its own public hearing to consider incentives for the project under their industrial development grant program. Next slide. Uh, as for, in regards to state incentives, the company is seeking a one NC cash grant from the state of North Carolina. This is a discretionary program that pays into a cash grant based on, uh, job creation. And of course, if it was approved, the county would actually be awarded the money and would disperse it to the company as long as it met job creation requirements. This is the standard, uh, protocol for this grant. So if the company were, uh, eligible for this grant and it was determined they would receive one, we would likely come back to the board of commissioners at a future date, asking them to apply, uh, for this one NC grant on behalf of the company. Next slide, please. In addition, we're also pursuing a building reuse grant for the project. Uh, this would help with building renovations such as HVAC, uh, electrical plumbing, things of that nature. And, um, like the one NC grants, the county would be the applicant technically for this grant. So again, we would likely come back to the board at a future date and ask them to apply for the grant. And also, the EDC would, would request, uh, that the county consider hiring a grant administrator for this building reuse grant, which we estimate to be no more than twelve thousand five hundred dollars as a fee. Again, we would come back later and make that request. Next slide, please. So, uh, as far as a requested action, um, we request the board consider approving this level one grant. I understand that, uh, the board may have to delay formal action based on everything that's going on right now in current, uh, public hearing laws, but I'll defer to the board and the county attorney on that as far as, uh, what direction you want to take. But, uh, we would ask that you at least, uh, view this request in a positive manner. Next slide, please. In closing, again, it would be three hundred and eighty-eight new jobs and, um, over five years, the county would, I'm sorry, over, uh, ten years, the county would retain about, um, five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Over five years, it would be ninety thousand dollars. But we feel this is a, a, a great opportunity to, uh, put a new business in a vacant industrial building in our county and also, uh, create a lot of jobs in a very quick manner. Any, again, thank you for considering this request. Are there any questions from the board before we go into the public hearing?
Scott, did you, uh, have any information on what the salary ranges are? I, I realize with what they're doing, it's, it's a wide range of employees. But do they have a medium?
Yes, sir. Uh, yes, sir. They did send that to us just recently. Uh, the average salary for all positions is forty-four thousand and thirty-nine dollars. So it is above the current county average, uh, for the project.
And does that include a benefit package or is that strictly salary?
That's strictly salary.
Okay, thank you.
And this, so the board would know, as far as job creation, they're proposing to create within the first year about a hundred and twenty-seven jobs. And then in the second year, about an additional one hundred and seventeen. And then it would, it would, uh, scale down until twenty twenty-four, when the, the last year of job creation would happen. And that'd just be twelve jobs. But again, it would be three hundred and eighty-eight total.
And any other questions?
Scott, this is a mic. Uh, you talked about the one NC grant. Uh, I guess that's for the building?
Uh, uh, sir, that, that's for the, uh, job creation. There's a building, there's a building reuse grant also.
Oh, building reuse grant, okay. What, um, how long has the building been empty? I, I couldn't remember, um, when it closed?
I want to say it closed in twenty eighteen. Um, I don't have an exact date for you, but, uh, I know it's been over a year at least.
So they've, uh, I guess, has this company been able to go into the building and look around? Is the building?
Yes, uh, and, uh, they were able to look at the building prior to, uh, their, their applications for incentives to the state. So they're aware of the condition and I think one of the positives about it was just, there's a lot of equipment left over there from the days of the AI solutions and could get them up and running pretty quickly.
Okay, so it's not a, this is really just to upgrade once a year, not really, not a lot of, uh, not a lot to do to get it back going, get the building back in use.
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
We have our standard call, uh, callback procedures in, in this contract, I'm sure. Uh, does the state ever get any money back out of all of their grants if somebody doesn't? Live up to their end of the bargain?
Typically so, uh, you know, a- as far as these grants, these two particular grants, um, if some of the, the goals were not met, job creation goals were not met, then since the county would be the, uh, the party dispensing the grant, they would look to the county to, uh, you know, return what hadn't been paid out to the company and also collect if necessary the, uh, money from the company.
But it's a year by year anyway, so we're not. All right, any other questions for Scott? All right, so, um, I'm assuming, I've been talking with Jay, I'm assuming that you guys have also talked with Jay, but uh, there's, uh, some new rulings that, uh, the legislature and the governor have, um, have passed along to counties in these new types of, uh, uh, video conferencing that we're having. And so what's going to happen is we're going to, we're going to, we're going to have a public hearing here in a second. But then we're going to leave that public hearing open for twenty-four hours uh, to give folks an opportunity, uh, to think and study on this. Um, but technically, we cannot, we're, we're, we're going to take a vote tonight, but that vote is going to be contingent on, uh, on everything going, uh, well with our, um, uh, with, with any, any additional public, uh, comments that may come. Um, so what we'll do is we'll just add this as a consent item. We'll go ahead and vote tonight contingent. And then we'll kind of wrap everything up as a consent agenda item on our next, um, at our next meeting, which I think will actually be a called meeting on the twenty-seventh. Uh, Scott has spoken with, uh, the business owners and they understand the kind of the new rails that we're trying to stay within here, uh, with the legislature and the governor. So, um, so he said they're okay with that. So, uh, having said that, we will open the floor now to a public hearing. And we'll rely on, on Randy, if there's any folks who, um, would like to speak, uh, on this, uh, particular incentive grant. Then we'll take a few uh, seconds to here to see if anyone comes in.
All right, we do have a few attendees. So for those that are, um, in the attendee mode, if you are willing to speak for a public hearing and you're in the Zoom application, you can do raise hand. If you're dialed in, uh, you can press star nine to raise your hand and we can work with you to allow you to speak during public hearing. Again, not seeing any action from anyone, just to verify that's raise your hand within the application or star nine to raise hand, uh, via the phone.
We're going to give a little bit of time, Randy, okay?
Not a problem at all.
All right, seeing as we've, we have no one that has either phoned in or zoomed in for this, then we will close the public hearing. And then Commissioners, what we'll need is a motion to approve. Uh, and, and then, um, that's, um, um, subject to the twenty-four hour additional period. And then we'll have the subsequent action, which will be, uh, wrapping it up as a consent agenda item on our twenty-seventh special called meeting. So do we have that motion?
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Here's, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Scott, thank you.
Thank you, board members.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, next item is, uh, Ed Muir and the Home Funding Action Plan. And just, this is also a, uh, a public hearing. And so just to give everyone a heads up, we will make a motion, uh, in the same way. It'll be subject to twenty-four hour additional period. And then we'll have a subsequent action, uh, as a consent agenda item on our, um, May twenty-seventh special called meeting, okay? So Ed, are you there?
Yes, I am here.
Hello, Ed.
Hey. Good evening.
Um, is that a real backdrop or is that one of those faux backdrops?
That's the real thing. It's me and what's behind me.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Where are you getting your haircut, Ed? Ed didn't have to have an underground barber, did he?
No, when we're, when we're done pummeling you, Ed, feel free to just go ahead with your item.
So, um, this item actually was approved by the board back in March. Um, the, uh, the application that was sent to the consortium was for a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, which is what we were advised that we would be receiving. But towards the end of March, we received word back from the consortium that we were going to receive about fourteen thousand dollars less than we anticipated. Um, and this is all HUD funding that's, that's funneled through the consortium. So, um, after some internal discussions, we opted to, um, re-advertise, hold another public hearing. Um, our application still stands the same. Um, five units is what we proposed to rehab and probably will do more, um, during the program year. So, um, we're going to focus on owner occupied rehabilitation. So it's, it's pretty much the same. The application that's in your, um, in your packet, I guess you can see it digitally, is the same as last time. The only thing that's changed is, is the amounts and as you mentioned earlier, due to the statutory changes, you'll need to have a follow-up hearing or action on it after this public hearing. Any questions?
Okay. All right, um, Ed, just a, a, um, procedural, uh, question here. We've got uh, an approval and three authorizations. Can we do all that under one motion?
You sure can. Um, just don't forget to have the public hearing. And so, once you close that, you can, you can adopt all those under the one motion. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, thank you. So then we will open the floor again to a public hearing. Randy, if you'll help us. We'll take a minute or so to see if anyone wants to zoom in or call in for the public hearing.
All right, so if anyone would like to participate and you're in the Zoom application, you can press this, the raise your hand option to be unmuted. If you're joining us via telephone, you can press star nine.
All right, April, are we all clear?
Not seeing any action from anyone at this time.
All right, so this is another item. We'll have, uh, a twenty-four hour period where folks can still uh, reach out to us. So we'll close the floor, uh, for the public hearing. And then, uh, I'll make a motion as follows, that we approve fiscal year twenty twenty-one Home Funding Action Plan. We'll authorize the county manager to sign the application as the certifying official. Also authorize the county manager to sign all administrative documents associated with the program and authorize the county manager to enter into a contract with the Salisbury Community Development Corporation to administer the county's home program for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Uh, make that into form of a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Jim, second. Um, any discussion?
I'd just like to thank Ed for being the conduit between the state and us and getting this done. This, this money means a whole lot to, uh, folks that really need it. And, um, and thank you, Ed. I know you do this every year. Uh, and it's a great project that we have, uh, little to do with, but, uh, just approving it. But I'm, I'm glad we're able to do that.
Thank you.
All right, we'll take this vote and this will be subject to, uh, anything that comes up in the form of public comment the next twenty-four hours. And then we will um, finish it up on the consent item on the June, uh, the May twenty-seventh special called meeting. So we have a motion in a second. Uh, any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Ed, thank you. Uh, let's see. Item number five, uh, Mental Health Month. Ms. Judy.
Sir. Um, I wanted to put this on the regular agenda because it's an issue, especially now, uh, during the isolation of, from our pandemic that, uh, people are dealing with more and more. And I'm sure that Mike can speak to, uh, mental health issues within our military and, and, um, I know my family has had mental health concerns, a number of them for many, many years. And, uh, so I just wanted to bring this and read it so our public can also be aware of how important being healthy mentally is. So, whereas mental health is an important part of overall health and well-being. And whereas mental health includes our emotional, psychological and social well-being and affecting how we think, feel, and act. And whereas mental health determines how we handle stress, relate to others, and make healthy choices. And whereas mental health is important at every state, state of life from childhood and adolescence through adulthood. Now therefore, the Rowan County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of May as Mental Health Month. And furthermore encourages leaders of Rowan County and its citizens to learn more about mental illness so we can support those struggling with this illness. Understand and learn how to help those as they try to live a safe and healthy life contributing to our community.
All right, thank you, Judy. Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, we have a second. Any discussion? Certainly is a timely proclamation, Judy. With folks stranded home alone.
Yeah.
Thanks for bringing this to us. We have a motion and a second. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I al- I also wanted to mention during this, uh, um, kind of follow up on Judy's proclamation. I've, I learned that this week is the forty-sixth annual National EMS Week.
Oh.
Yeah, I thought that, um, certainly it really ties into Judy, what you just, uh, did for us. And I just wanted to give a little information on that. In nineteen seventy-four, President Gerald Ford autho-rai- authorized EMS Week to celebrate EMS practitioners and the important work they do in our nation's communities. Um, NAEMT, that's the National Association of EMT Partners with the American College of Emergency Physicians to lead annual EMS Week activities together. These organizations are working to ensure that the important contributions of EMS practitioners and safeguarding the health, safety, and well-being of their communities are fully celebrated and recognized. This week brings together local communities and medical personnel to honor the dedication of those who provide the day-to-day lifesaving services of medicine's frontline. Whether celebrated with a company cookout or a catered lunch, an open house, award ceremony, or even quiet reflection about what it means to be an EMS practitioner. EMS Week is the perfect time to recognize EMS and all that its practitioners do for our nation. And certainly, they are the, uh, the bridge between our community and our hospitals. And they are, are truly frontline. Director Chris Solis told me that their theme this week is ready today and preparing for tomorrow. And, um, so I, I did want to bring that before the board, just as a word of appreciation. I know some of you may have some things you'd like to add. But certainly, um, during this time when we see these folks, just like they always do, it's no different. But it's only different because we're recognizing it, uh, more and more. Uh, we know they do their job every day, but now, uh, there's so much emphasis on our frontline folks that I did want to, uh, thank our folks, uh, Lenny and the good job that he does, Chris. Director out there. And, um, we just want to give a shout out to all of our EMS workers and tell you all how much we appreciate you. Thank you very much. Anyone have anything we'd like to add to that? All right, we're not voting on that. It's just a good word. It's just a good word. Okay, item number six, uh, let's see. I believe this is for, uh, County Manager Church.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This item is to request for qualifications for all work that design COVID-19 work citizen environments. Like to ask the board to consider authorizing the manager to, uh, release this RFQ. The renovations may include, but would not be limited to installing safety glass, partitions, intercom systems, and possibly, um, some type of drive-through facility. Uh, we expect that these services and subsequent, uh, construction, if approved by the board, uh, would be paid for with funding from the Coronavirus Relief Fund established under the CARES Act.
Okay, any questions for the manager?
Aaron, um, the CARES Act, that has to be specifically spent for, um, COVID-19, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so it can be physical or, um, like building types of things, but also the tests that we need and, and PPEs and all the rest of that, too.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. And that, uh, some of that is bridging into the next agenda item, but this is just something to go ahead and get in the works. Um, doesn't necessarily mean it's how all or really, if any, of the money will be spent. It's just, um, as you all, all know, we've, we've spoken and, uh, these funds are required to be obligated, as I understand it, in December of this year. So this is just one step of, of getting prepared for that. Um, and at the same time, uh, to design, um, uh, work environments and, and general areas to minimize as much as possible the transmission of, of COVID-19.
Okay.
Aaron, are these architectural fees coming out of that grant also?
We, we anticipate they would be, uh, an allowable expense. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Here, is, um, when they look at these different, uh, options, is it possible that some of these could have a dual, could work duly both for, uh, COVID and for like physical violence protection? When you start talking about, uh, intercoms and then putting in different, uh, class between the citizens and the people? Are they looking at any of that or are they looking just strictly at, you know, keeping the virus away from people?
They'll, they'll be, uh, tasked with just strictly, um, minimizing, uh, the, as much as possible, the transmission of COVID-19.
Aaron, is this also just for the county office buildings? Or is this the schools also?
Um, not necessarily, only for the county office buildings. Um, it could potentially be for municipalities if, if, if they're interested or have a, uh, a general area, um, uh, that, that they need, uh, to be looked at. Um, insofar as the schools, um, I imagine it, it could be, uh, it certainly could be, but, um, they may have received a certain proportion of the CARES Act as well. But Leslie, do you, do you know, or Randy specifically, uh, what the schools have received?
Aaron, this is Randy. Um, it's, I do know the schools have received funding for technology side and there has been some others. I do not have the exact details in front of me though, but there has been funding from CARES Act passed through from Department of Public Instruction.
Randy, do you know if those funds are to be used for technology or were they to be used for safety?
The ones that I'm aware of are for technology. Um, but there are some others. I just don't have the details in front of me, but I can definitely find out, um, what the specifics of those different areas are.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to know if we're going to put this out for an architect. He'd like to know his scope of work before he gets started.
Well, well, this, the RFQ would just be a, you know, it'll, it'll in general address, um, the design and renovation of government facilities. You know, we won't limit the scope in the RFQ. Once we get down to the contract with the, with the architect, which will probably be a month from now, we'll be able to narrow the scope down. Commissioner Pierce.
Okay, I'd just like to know that we're getting all, all that we can if we're going to get this through. All right, um, so the, uh, the question is, uh, to approve an RFQ for the architect to design COVID-19 work slash citizen environments. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All right, uh, Commissioner Pierce, motion. And Commissioner Klusman, second. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. So then, uh, item number seven is, um, we are going to schedule a special meeting to be held May 27th at 3:00 PM, uh, to discuss. You guys got an email that says, "Purpose of this special call meeting will be to discuss and adopt a plan to be submitted to the state by June 1 of 2020." Also, since we are, uh, calling for this special meeting, we'll need to add to the details of that special meeting, those two consent agenda items. One being the incentive agreement and another for the, uh, for the home, uh, grants, uh, that Ed presented to us. So there will be three items, uh, on that agenda. And so I need a motion to approve that special call meeting from May 27th for those three items.
So moved.
I could, all right.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may just, um, kind of going back to Commissioner Pierce's comment. At this meeting, we, we will present a plan and option to you. And it, it may be that the board, there's other things aside from, uh, design and construction that you would like for the money to go toward. We're just putting the RFQ in place. So in the event that that is the direction you want to go, we'll be about a week ahead, ahead of schedule of at least getting the proposals in. I mean, it, it, no way locks in the county that that's how the money would be spent. There's lots of, um, lots of different ways the money can be spent. Um, that's just one option.
Okay, thank you.
And on, on the 27th, we'll talk about how we're personally liable for those dollars.
Yeah.
Personally, financially, and civilly.
Chairman, what, what time we're going to have this meeting?
3 o'clock. What's that, Craig?
I said, keep squeezing that rock and see what you get out of it.
All right, so we have a motion. This, uh, do we have a second?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number eight, Leslie, financial report.
Yes, sir. I will wait for that to be loaded. The first graph shows cumulative current year property tax. And, um, for fiscal year 2020 through the month of March, uh, we had collected $84,576,000, which is 99% but of budget. Over the prior three years, we had collected 96, 97, and 98% of budget. Um, so it's the, 2020 is the first year of the revaluation. And, um, we're usually conservative in budgeting that revaluation amount. So typically in a revaluation year, your tax collection, uh, percentage per, uh, your percent of budget is greater than other years. The next slide.
Hey, can I, can I ask you while we're on there? I, I, um, so we're at 99%. We could do some quick math and, um, what was our, was our projection?
Our projected budget was $85,050,000.
Okay. So how many, we've got, how many months do we have left to collect?
Three months.
Well, it looks like we'll come in above budget on that then, or we?
Yes.
Potentially could, okay. All right, sorry.
No, that's fine. Thank you. The next graph is cumulative sales tax comparisons. And through the month of January, in sales tax, we collected $16.2 million, which is 61% of budget. In the prior three years, we had collected 61, 60, and 59% of budget. So as a percent of budget, we're right where I would expect to be. Um, through January, sales tax collections, uh, are 6.1% greater than those collected in the prior year.
What was, what was your, what was your projection? Do you remember?
For total budget for sales tax?
The percentage increase.
Um, the percent increase, I think, was 5%.
So when y'all project for next budget year, you'll be pretty close again, right?
I, I am not going to make that, that statement.
Uh, yeah, I had a method to that question. Y'all, y'all have been pretty good. I just wanted to see what you're going to do.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's up in the air, that's for sure, for next year. That is the big unknown.
So for the, for the public, as you're looking at this, this is our real challenge and we'll get into this in a minute. But here it is, middle of May, and we're only now getting January figures. So, um, we're, we're trying to project. Anyway, we'll talk about that later, sorry.
Okay. All right, um, the next slide is cumulative revenue comparisons. So in total revenue, we have collected $127.8 million this fiscal year, which is 84% of budget. And the percent of budget for the prior three years was also 84%. So, so far, we're right on target. And the last slide is, uh, cumulative expenditure comparisons. Through the month of April, we have spent $122.7 million, which is 74% of our expenditure budget. Um, in the prior three years, that percent was either 76 or 75%. So we're still in line with prior years as far as expenditures as a percent of budget.
Good.
That's good.
Thank you, Leslie.
Thank you.
You're going to earn your, earn your living this year. Not that you don't, other, other times.
I'm, I'm going to have more gray hairs after this year. That's for sure.
Yeah.
What's wrong with that?
Precisely.
Well, the difference is this year, unless they open up, um, the beauty shop, we're going to know you're, you've got more gray hair.
That's true.
Yeah. We may see Leslie coming in in a, in a Duke baseball cap.
I've got several.
All right, uh, Manager Church, presentation of the 2021 budget.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you'll bear with us, April is, um, going to be handling the PowerPoint. Okay, there we go. Okay, um, first of all, thank you for the opportunity to present the fiscal year 2021 budget. It is balanced and prepared in accordance with the Local Government Budget and Fiscal Control Act. April, you can go to the next slide. Uh, this budget, oh, well, that's fine. You can, no, that's, that's good. The budget is tight and the budget is conservative. The total amount of the budget for 2021 is $176,407,511. The general fund, uh, recommended budget is $153,521,214. The fire district fund is $6,608,824. Uh, there is no tax increase recommended. There were two tax increase requests from fire departments. The emergency telephone fund is $547,782. The risk management fund is $1,392,800. The landfill fund is $9,612,166. The airport fund is $581,965. And the water fund is $136,000. Um, as we all know, the general fund is the largest part of the budget and that's what we always concentrate the most on. Next slide, please. So the general fund budget, uh, for the year we're currently in, uh, was adopted at $159,883,238. The requested budget, um, for the general fund was $215,839,302. And the recommended budget for fiscal year 21 That is a $6,362,024 reduction, which is a 4% reduction from last year. Next slide, April. Uh, the property tax base, uh, did increase. Uh, it is $13,760,000,000. However, the collection rate has decreased by 1.25%. I'm going to stop there and let Leslie explain how we came up with that number and the statutory, uh, requirements surrounding the collection rate and how that affects the property tax base and the...
Okay, the, um, so the general statute states that you cannot adopt a budget with a property tax rate collection percentage greater than the collection percentage for the prior year. That makes things rather tricky because we're presenting a budget today, but we won't know the tax collection percentage for fiscal year 2020 until mid-July, when, um, everything is completely reconciled. So we are using, uh, recommended tax collection percentage for fiscal year 2021 of 96.5%. Um, that was obtained in a couple different ways. One, we went back to the last recession. And in fiscal year 2008, which was prior to the recession, we had a... We had a, um, collection percentage of ninety-seven point zero six percent. Then, um. O- over the next two years. The collection percentage dropped to ninety-five point eight three percent. Which is a one point two three percent reduction. The economists are, you know, the problem with the, the effects of the COVID nineteen. Versus a, a normal recession. They are different, and so they are projecting that the tax rate collection percentage. Will hit faster. The decrease in the collection percentage will hit faster. So that is the one point two five percent. We, um, I also talked at length with Tanya Parnell, who is the tax collector for the county. And she agreed that the ninety-six point five percent was, um, where we thought we should be. We think it's conservative enough. That we will be in good shape next year with that percentage. When we were looking at the earlier graphs, the interesting thing there is that is against budget. So that is not what the tax rate collection percentage will be this year. However, the majority of taxes are collected. For this year, and, um, really were collected before COVID nineteen had an impact on property taxes. Does anyone have any questions about that?
That, thank you, Leslie. Uh, the recommended tax rate remains the same. At sixty-five point seventy-five cents. And the sales tax revenue projection, which is kind of the, one of the, the. Most important parts of this budget. We are recommending a decrease of approximately nine point five percent. From last year's budgeted amount, which equates to a loss in revenue of two million, five hundred thousand dollars. April, if you could go to the next slide. So, um. Just Friday, and I sent the article to the commissioners. Came out, uh, an article on CNBC dot com by Jeff Cox. The finance editor. And, uh, the title was retail sales plunge of record sixteen point four percent in April, far worse than predicted. In the article, he wrote, net-net, consumers couldn't get out to shop last month as the pandemic virus kept them at home. And the result is an economy that has simply collapsed. And he goes on, uh, to quote, uh, the chief financial economist at. MFUG Union Bank. We have never seen economic data like this before in history. You go to the next slide, April. So, in the article that came out Friday, the, the reduction. Was sixteen point four. Percent in, in retail sales. And you might ask, well, why are we only budgeting a reduction of nine point five percent? So, um, to try to explain that, the sales tax for the first six months of the current year. Was six point six percent above the budgeted. Uh, amount, and it's prorated, we're prorating it out to around twenty-eight million, forty thousand. Okay, so for fiscal year twenty-one that we're going into. We are projecting a twenty percent reduction. For the first six months of the year from the twenty-eight million, forty thousand. And then a ten percent reduction for the remaining six months from the twenty-eight million, forty thousand. Not the twenty-six million, five hundred thousand that we budgeted, but the, what, what the prorated. Actual sales tax was at the first of the, the month. So, uh, not the first of the month, the first six months. So, we, we believe our, um, uh, projection of a nine point five percent reduction. From the original budget. Is very conservative, and it is in line with some of the news. That we're starting to see come out, um, about April and what we'll see in May. So I think, I think, and I hope, um, again, this is, this is a guess. But I hope that by passing this bu- budget and using this number, we will be somewhere close to what the sales tax may be. If things turn around. The economy picks back up, I think we'll be in a very solid position. Any questions about that particular slide? Okay, ne- next slide. So this is probably aside from the, um, sales tax, um, projection. To balance the budget, one of the, the revenues is the appropriated. Fund balance that we're all familiar with. Some may refer to fund balances as, you know, a savings account or, um, you know. When things get bad, it's, it's something that you can use, but what we're trying to do this year is, is not to deplete the fund balance. In fact, you'll see that the recommended twenty-one bu- uh, fiscal year twenty-one budget. The fund balance appropriation to balance the budget is less than it's been in, in the last ten years. And it's a reduction of forty-one point three percent of what we budgeted. Of what the approved budget was for the current fiscal year. So not only is the sales tax. Projection conservative, the fund balance appropriation to balance this budget is conservative. What, a- and I think the, the commissioners. Should feel confident that by, by doing this and by having a top budget, that if things do go. In a negative direction, or more negative than they already are, um, that we will have not depleted. Our fund balance to balance the budget for this coming year. So I think this is very conservative. It, it's very safe. And, and it's one of the things I'm, you know, I'm most proud of, of, of this budget is that. We are reducing our fund balance appropriation lower than it has been in, in the last ten years. The budgeted, uh, the adopted budgeted appropriation. Ne- next slide. So here's a graph of what that looks like, um, and the blue line is the baseline of. The six million, seven hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. And as you will see, um, in two thousand eleven, and again, this is the adopted budget fund balance. Throughout the year, it can go up. But this is what was adopted. You'll see two thousand eleven. And I don't guess anyone can see my cursor because I'm not controlling the PowerPoint. That's correct. Okay, so, um, if you'll look at the two thousand eleven, you'll see that it was a little over ten million. Then two thousand twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, you'll see how it gradually moved up. Uh, and that's, that's common to move up as the budget increases. So as the budget grows larger, um, the fund balance appropriation often grows larger too. Because it stays, it's kind of all relative. What, what I'm, I'm, I'm pleased to say is that we're not continuing. We're not continuing to go up or staying level, is that it is going way down. And in the event, you know, as I said in the last side, slide, that things, um, do not improve. I think this will put us in a very strong position. Does anyone have any questions about this slide? Okay, um, next slide. The continuation, uh, budget highlights, um, this budget, um, includes. Uh, a plan that this board, we've been following, uh, for the last three years. By transferring, uh, one million, four hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars. To the Westin Plaza Capital Projects Fund. At the end of, uh, fiscal year twenty-one. We should have approximately four million, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars in that fund. Next slide. There is a request for thirty-nine new positions. The cost would have been one million, nine hundred, ninety-seven dollars. Two, no, no, one million, nine hundred, ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-three dollars. The budget recommends two new positions, and let me explain. What those, it's actually three positions, but let me explain what those, those two positions are. One, one of the positions is transferring, um, an environmental compliance specialist from the landfill fund. Into the, to the general fund, um, and that is in line with, which we haven't received the final report, but. The consulting firm we hired to look at our inspections and planning department. So, um, this position, um, most of, a lot of their time is spent on erosion control. And so we're saying it's a new position because it is a new position, um, in the general fund. It's not a new position for the county. The second new position, and that's the majority of the cost, um, is that position. The second new position is a preparedness coordinator in the health department. And as I understand that position, um, a lot of that position is gonna be paid for with other revenue. The third position that you don't see listed here, it's because it's in another fund. But once you receive your, you know, your, your entire budget packet and the continuation sheet, it's in there. And that is to create a solid waste enforcement officer at the landfill. To enforce, uh, laws around littering throughout the county. That will be a sworn, uh, law enforcement position, and that position will report to Caleb Sinclair. And will focus on, um, uh, enforcing the littering laws in Rowan County. And that position, again, will be paid for out of the landfill fund. So, three new positions, only two new people. And one will be paid for out of the landfill fund, and one we anticipate will be paid for with other revenues. Next slide, please. So according to David Payne, a staff economist. It's quoted, the, the inflation lo- and with inflation likely to barely register this year. The letter is now forecasting that there will simply not be a social security cost adjustment for two thousand twenty-one. This is just a forecast. But it's, it's an example I wanted to show, um, this budget, um, does not include a cost of living. For county employees. Next slide. The fiscal year, um, this continues into the highlights. Of expansion items, uh, the health insurance adjustment, we always put that in expansion to, to point that out. Is seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Insurance has went up a lot, and that's something we've been working on, but it continues to go up. The intergov assist complete. Randy, are you, you, can, can you explain this to the board as well as Eagleview pictometry?
I sure can. The intergov assist complete was listed in expansion, uh, because it will be a new service. We're looking at a cost offset, uh, with a technology fee that is being proposed by, uh, Thomas O'Kelly. And Building Inspections Director. Uh, the intergov assist is an offering to expand professional services. With the solution that we use for both permitting, uh, in building inspections. So this additional thirty thousand is a solution offering. Uh, it has been reviewed by, uh, Matrix Consulting. And, and looked at as a value add, uh, to basically bring more alignment, uh, with workflow. And working with the vendor to get more from the package, which would assist both, uh, building inspections. And planning and development, and also we'll look at that with environmental health and fire inspections as well. Because there's a potential to utilize that application more, uh, more fully. This is a one-year, um, agreement. And can be canceled at any time. And again, it, uh, we are looking at that as being offset by the technology fee that's being proposed. The Eagleview pictometry is a three-year contract, so this will be the one-time cost for the upcoming twenty twenty-one. This we've had in the past, and actually, we were looking at having it this year. But due to changes in COVID nineteen and, and timings with budget, uh, we held off and deferred. And then also with, uh, our ta- new tax administrator wanting to make sure, uh, we had, you know, someone that was able to. Understand what pictometry can do and what the support would be. Uh, this forty thousand would be this year. And then we would have two additional years of forty thousand, uh, bringing that to the hundred and twen- a hundred and twenty thousand total for the entire project. This is for the additional flyovers that give angled views. The primary would be used by, um, Chip Main, our, uh, tax administrator, uh, in preparation for revaluation. And he has anticipated that there are new discoveries in new property tax, uh, valuation from this, uh, could exceed, you know, fifty million. So if any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer, but Aaron, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Randy. Uh, the next is, um, independent validation of EMS. The next one is, uh, seventy-four Streamlot Protec. Rail mount, that's for the sheriff's department. Uh, next slide.
What, what exactly is that?
A- as I understand it, the, the state, um, has added. Not, uh, not, something to do with, um, not qualification. For rifles, so this would provide, provide flashlights for each individual rifle for the sheriff's department. When they qualify.
I didn't realize they had rifles. Okay.
Okay, the, um, the next is, uh, NATO ballistic shields. Two annual summer camps, that's for the sheriff's department.
Aaron, can I stop you right there? How many shields are we talking about buying here?
Two.
Okay.
And, and these are shields that, um, that block, um, high-powered rifles.
Yeah, they're bulletproof.
Yep. Then the RFID security gate, that's for the new library, and then two RFID, RFID workstations. And then, uh, the Woodleaf Park master plan. April, next slide, oops, okay. Now to, um, school funding, so. For the current expense. There is an increase in school funding, uh, of three hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars. But there's not an increase, um, to Rowan Salisbury schools or. To Rowan Salisbury Schools or Kannapolis City Schools. And that's based on the state and local estimates for the average daily membership. Rowan Salisbury is projected to lose twenty-two students. Kannapolis. Is projected to gain one and charter schools are expected to gain three hundred and ninety-one students. So. This Rowan Salisbury Schools will receive a three hundred and sixty-three thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollar. Decrease in current expense. Kannapolis City Schools will receive a twenty-four thousand one hundred and five. Dollar decrease and charter schools will receive seven hundred and forty-seven thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollar increase.
Aaron. Is the policy of headcount. As it pertains to charter schools still. As I understand it. If a child is, is counted for charter or homeschool. And the funds are transferred. Then even if that child goes back to public school, the money does not follow them back. Is that still policy?
Well, the, the Commissioner Clusman, these are just the, the estimates. So, you know, it. You know, th- this appropriation is, is based on estimates. So. Yeah, I guess since the appropriation is based on this estimate, that may be the case.
Okay.
Where, where do the estimates come from?
Leslie, do you mind to answer that question regarding the state estimates?
Yes, and. And I, I'll, I'll also spring briefly to how the funds are distributed to the charter schools. I, I think that might clarify the answer to Commissioner Clusman. So the estimates for Rowan Salisbury Schools and Kannapolis City Schools. They submit information to the State Department of Public Instruction. And we receive their average daily memberships directly from the state. For the charter schools, the school systems themselves provide numbers to us. The main reason for this large increase in charter schools is. Rowan Salisbury Schools feel that. In fiscal year twenty twenty, that their number count for charter schools. Was very much understated.
Okay.
So they actually. Went from in fiscal year twenty twenty, we much said that if three hundred and twenty-nine charter school students. And this year, the number they gave us is seven hundred and fifteen, which is an increase of three hundred and eighty-six students. Then the way that the money is distributed to charter schools is we send. E- even though it says it's a charter school appropriation. Based on that appropriation, we send that money to. Either Kannapolis City Schools or Rowan Salisbury Schools. And then every month, the charter schools must. Send an accounting of the number of students that they have to the school system. And either, you know, Rowan Salisbury Schools or Kannapolis City Schools then provides. The allocation based on that count back to the charter school. So that if. The. Charter school enrollment decreased, the money would not stay with the charter school. It would stay Rowan Salisbury Schools or Kannapolis City Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Now Leslie, if they had already paid though. And then the, the child went back.
If they paid within for a month, you know. Then maybe that month would stay there. But they wouldn't continue to find. The school system, meaning Kannapolis City Schools or Rowan Salisbury Schools would not continue to send money after that one month for that child. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so they're not, you know, they're not paying them upfront for a year based on.
Yeah.
The August count.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
April, are there any other questions about this slide? Okay, next slide. So the fiscal year twenty-one school funding capital outlay. Based on the local option sales tax. Article forty and forty-two, our est- what we're estimating is going to decrease. Is going to provide a reduction to the Rowan Salisbury Schools. At four hundred and twenty-one thousand and twenty-two dollars and for Kannapolis. City Schools at twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars for a total of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now, this is, this is an estimate and they will receive what actually comes in. So. You know, if, if, if things. Are better than we're projecting, then, then. Their appropriation would increase with that.
So this is in addition to the amount on the last slide?
Yeah, the, the, the last slot was for current expense.
Okay.
And this is for capital.
Okay.
Okay.
That, this number is what it is, that forty and forty-two. That's part of our sales tax that we pay and they get all of that.
Right.
You're just projecting with the decrease in sales tax that it'll affect the school system. Totalling four hundred and fifty thousand.
Next slide. So school funding, you, any, for new debt service, this budget does not include any additional. Debt commitments for Rowan Salisbury School, Kannapolis City School or Rowan Cabarrus Community College. This includes. The. The approved. Facilities for Rowan. Bears Community College for the bond. This budget does not include that. It doesn't include any money for any new school facilities. So. All plans to build any new school facilities. Will be suspended if this budget is adopted as presented. This includes all architectural and engineering designs. And, and let me explain. You know. The reason behind this is because. At this particular time, in the current situation that we're in and with the. The uncertainty that we face, not knowing what our future holds i- in, in, insofar. As revenues. The purpose for this is to take a break for a year. And to see where our budget is. If at that point, if things are back to normal. And things are good, we can continue this, but that continuing the. Community college building that was passed on the referendum, you know, will include a three cent tax increase. But I just didn't feel like this was the year to raise taxes on citizens in the middle of a pandemic. So. That is the reason that that's not included. As well as the, for the Rowan Salisbury. School system and Kannapolis City Schools. So this budget recommends. You know, that all new capital. Facilities. Stop or not happen until next fis- fiscal year. Any questions about this slide?
By the way, we've spoken with Rowan Cabarrus President Carol, Dr. Carol Spalding. She completely understands. And it is not pushing to move forward with so much uncertainty. We've spoken with the school superintendent and also the, the chairman of the board. Rowan Salisbury Schools, they've been very gracious. They understand the same. Just agreed to keep an eye on the year to see how we're going. Appreciate their understanding. Very much.
Next, oh, we're at the next slide. So. The summary statement, again, this budget is tight, it's conservative. If the projected sales tax revenue is overstated. A property tax increase will be required. Next year to maintain the current services recommended in this budget. With that said, you know, a- a- as we all know, we have a hiring freeze in place. We plan to continue to keep that in place until we see how the economy is going to go, both, you know. Across the country and locally and throughout the state. In hopes that, you know, if things do not improve, we will be prepared for next year. But, you know, that, that's the basic summary. Statement for this year's proposed budget. I, I certainly hope that, that it is too conservative and that, that, that our estimates are. Wrong. And that they are, things are much better than we're projecting. We, we can only hope and pray that things are. Will not be. That things will, that things will improve. With that said, I, I, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions tonight. Leslie. Is, is here and available to answer any questions. I sent an email last night. To each commissioner, I'd like to, you know, individually talk to you one-on-one because I know it's kind of a. It's a strange year. You don't have the budget in your hand. And, you know, as you know, it's three big books and they weigh a lot. So. And I've, I've got them and you've got them here in the office. It's just due to. The way things are now. You, you haven't, you know, you don't have them yet. But they will be, be provided to you. I can meet, you know, we can meet. Whatever is convenient with your schedule, if you'll just send me the best date and time for you. I'll take as much time a- as I need to, to explain the entire budget and some things. I mean, there's a lot of things that I didn't cover. In this message because we just tried, tried to cover just basically the highlights. That, any questions the board ha- have tonight, I'd be glad to answer them.
Aaron, I've had a lot of conversations with the employees asking me if we're going to have any furlough days. And I noticed in this formation that you gave us tonight, none of that was mentioned. Is that something that's going to happen or is that, have we taken care of that?
No, there, there is no recommended furlough day or furloughs in this budget.
Most, most of the employees I've talked to that asked me about it is okay with not having a COVID increase. Which they understand, they just didn't want to have to give up some of their pay. So I'm glad to see was able to work that out.
Yeah, it, it, it took a lot of hard work of all, of all the directors. I mean, they really. You know, they work hard. To. You know, on their budgets and worked hard with, with me and Leslie. To, you know, to do everything they could to reduce the budget as much as possible. And everyone worked, you know, we've, you know, everyone worked really well this year with each other. But. Through everybody's cooperation, we were able to present a budget without any furloughs. It wasn't mentioned in the budget message, but because it's a continuation, but we also still left the longevity. The longevity pay is, is in this budget. So employees will be eligible for, you know, I think it starts at five percent, then one percent, then one point five and two percent. Originally last year, it was recommended to be based on performance. Performance, but in part due to COVID and. The challenges we're facing. You know, with working remotely and, and, and various other reasons, the budget recommends that. It not be based on performance appraisals this year. So. Not only will there not be a furlough, employees will get a small increase based on their longevity with the county.
Well, thank you for your hard work and thank the directors for doing what they had to, to make sure these employees are taken care of.
Yeah, I'll second that one.
Well, it's hard to say no. But it's better to set expectations of, of a conservative budget and then. Hopefully it's better. I would rather us say no and mean no than to say yes and mean no. So, Aaron, I know you, you and Leslie and Leslie's staff work real hard on this. I know you've been up. Late and spending all your weekends, so we really appreciate what you're doing and hopefully all the bad news is. Is overstated. We certainly hope things get better. Alright, so. He's actually presenting this a little early. He doesn't have to present it until. June one, I think. So we appreciate your work and getting to, getting to us early. So. Just encourage commissioners, go ahead and set your time with him. Spend all the time you need and then. We'll come back in, in the next. Few weeks and set a budget work session, et cetera. Okay?
Chairman adds, I apologize for interrupting you, but it looks like Commissioner Green is no longer on the call. And he's rejoining now. If you'll bear with us for just a moment.
Was it that bad, Commissioner Green?
We lost him, so I called him on my cell phone and just had him on speaker listening. But it looks like he may be getting back in, so.
Put his pajamas on.
There you go.
It's late, I had to take a little nap.
I'm glad you're back, Jim. Okay. So nothing for us to do right now, right, Aaron?
No, no, so you have until July, well, you have until the July first to adopt the budget.
So we'll work with Carolyn on a. On, on a schedule for us to. To move forward with a budget. Hearing with our work session and we'll do all that probably the same day. Alright, uh, let's see, where are we? Another item, just a litter report. I've got that our staff removed twelve thousand two hundred and fifty pounds of roadside bulk debris and litter. For the two-week period ending April twentieth through May first. There's also something interesting I got from the sheriff. I know the manager mentioned. That we were gonna, we were gonna add someone. But we've got someone now that is doing some work on, on. On litter and if you look in the middle, Rowan County Law Enforcement initiated twenty-four case reports while investigating litter calls. The following are the statistics from those reports. There was one arrest for possession of a firearm by a felon while investigating a dump site, an illegal dump site. So eleven arrests for dumping, that's not actual, doesn't mean necessarily actual arrests. That just means. Let's see, it would mean. A warrant or, or citation, things like that. There were eight citations for littering, nine warning citations where the offenders were given fourteen-day period to return and clean up. Illegal dump, dumping and all nine of those complied. Four open cases are pending in a fourteen-day period. One case recovered stolen property from the county. Two cases were found sus- suspects that were being interviewed had outstanding warrants. So this officer's been busy and hopefully we'll see those numbers reducing. So if any of you are missing your mattress and pillows, we, we have found them.
Here.
Is that a piano? Oh my goodness. Yeah, it looks like a p- keyboard or piano or something, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's sad.
Yeah.
Well, I would just say that, uh, while they're doing a good job of, our folks are doing a good job of, of picking up the litter, I would also encourage our folks that are staying home, especially with children, to get out there and pick up litter in your neighborhood. Um, because, uh, it's the right thing to do and we need to have a good, clean community.
That's good, you're good. All right, uh, let me take a second, make sure I hadn't. You guys, does anyone? Anyone have anything else? Aaron, anything? Craig, Judy? Mike, Jim, Mike's good to see and Mike is on reserve duty right now. He's away, so it's good to see him. As part of the theme. So, uh, thank you again, Mike, for your good work. Your patriotic work for us. Thank you, buddy. All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So.
All right.
Second.
All right, one second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone stay.